Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, April 22, 2021 Kern County Planning Commission hearing. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Mr. Ashley?
Here.
Mr. Judge?
Here.
Mr. McGiffney?
Here.
Oh. Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Simon?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
The county of Kern provided notice that as a result of the declared federal, state, and local emergencies due to COVID-19 pandemic and in light of the governor's order, this Kern County Planning Commission meeting is not physically open to the public. Testimony and general public comment are accepted via email or voice message to the clerk of the commission prior to tonight's meeting, and live comments via teleconference will be held during the meeting. If you are interested in providing comments on any item on the agenda and have not already received direction on how to do so, please contact the clerk at (661) 496-7487. We will begin tonight's meeting with commissioner member announcements or reports. Seeing none, we will move on to item number C, approval of minutes from April 8, 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number D, cases withdrawn or requests for continuance. We have item number three. Ms. Simon?
Yes, thank you Chairwoman Skidmore. There is only one case requesting continuance tonight, and that is CUP 16 MAP 121, Zone Variance 10 MAP 121. This is a conditional use permit to allow a travel center with a truck wash and repair shop and a zone variance to construct a pole sign that exceeds the maximum height and sign face size allowed by the CHPD district. This project is located at the southwest corner of Stockdale Highway and Interstate 5 in the unincorporated Bakersfield area. Staff is recommending the case be continued to May 27, 2021 to allow for further evaluation of the project. That concludes the cases withdrawn or requests for continuance for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Do we need a motion to continue?
Madam Clerk, I'd make a motion to continue if there are no other commissioners making additions or subtractions.
I'd second that.
Okay, Commissioner Sprague made a motion, and we have a second. We will do a roll call vote.
Mr. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Judge?
Yes.
Mr. McGiffney?
Yes.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
All ayes.
Item number E is consent items. These are items scheduled before the planning commission, which are being recommended for approval by the staff, and the applicant has been informed of any special conditions and has no objection. I'll pass all three items over to Ms. Simon.
Thank you again Chairwoman Skidmore. There are three items on the consent agenda. The first item is case number one, SPA 159 MAP 500. The applicant is Fred Porter by Porter and Associates. The project is located approximately 18 miles southwest of the city of Bakersfield and south of the former shoreline of Buena Vista Lake Bed in unincorporated Kern County. This proposal is a textual amendment to the land use element of the approved South Kern Industrial Center specific plan. The proposed textual amendment updates the permitted and conditionally permitted solar energy electrical generation uses to be consistent with sections 1940-020H and 1940-030G listed within the M3 district of the Kern County zoning ordinance. Staff recommendation is to advise Planning Commission to recommend the Board of Supervisors approve specific plan amendment as requested and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. The second item on the consent agenda is case number four, CUP 28 MAP 41-31. The applicant is Outsourced Utilities Contractor Corporation. The project is located at 6094 Lake Isabella Boulevard. The project before your commission is a conditional use permit to allow a temporary staging site to be used as a lay down yard and to store a fleet of utility trucks, materials, and equipment for approximately 18 months in an A district. The staff recommendation is to approve in accordance with the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. And the final item on the consent agenda this evening is Zone Change Case 29 MAP 103-25, and the applicant is Thompson Investments LLC by French and Associates. This project is located on the west side of Morning Drive and approximately 400 feet south of the East Niles Street and Morning Drive intersection in unincorporated East Bakersfield. The project is a change in zone classification from E2.5RS to C2PD or a more restrictive district on an approximate 33,143 square foot parcel. Staff recommendation is to advise the Planning Commission to recommend the Board of Supervisors approve the zone change as requested and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. That concludes the consent agenda for this evening.
Madam Clerk, were there any public comments on any items on the consent agenda?
Chairwoman Skidmore, there have been no requests to speak.
Great. Do we have any comments or questions from any of the fellow commissioners?
Madam Chair, if there are no other comments, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Seeing no other comments, I think you can make that motion.
All right. I would make a motion to approve items number consent agenda. Items number one, four, and five is read into the record by staff.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. We will do a roll call vote.
Mr. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Judge?
Yes.
Mr. McGiffney?
Yes.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
All ayes.
I believe there is right to appeal for items on the consent agenda, so I'll pass it back over to Ms. Simon.
Yes, Chairwoman Skidmore, there is. It's for the CUP, and an appeal may be filed at the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department at 2700 M Street, Suite 100, Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms available at the Planning and Natural Resources Department. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including this hearing date.
Thank you. We are on item number F, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the commission on any matter not on this agenda and over which the commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record before making any presentations. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Chairwoman Skidmore, I have received no request to speak in this portion.
Great, thank you. Item G, public hearings. We have one item this evening, and so I will pass it back over to Ms. Simon.
Thank you again Chairwoman Skidmore. Got it this time, clean and clear. All right. Good evening again, commissioners. The proposal before you this evening is vesting tentative tract map number 7162 and zone modification number seven MAP number 101-23. The proposal for this site is to divide a 10-acre site into 25 residential lots ranging in size from 10,940 square feet to 18,523 square feet with a 16,000-square-foot sump lot. The proposal includes a limited design variation to the land division ordinance to allow a lot depth greater than three times the width, and finally, a zone modification to allow a six-foot fence within the front yard setback of the sump lot where a four-foot-high fence is required. This project is located on the east side of Jenkins Road, approximately a quarter mile north of Meacham Road. The site is designated as SR, which is suburban residential by the Western Rosedale specific plan, and zoned A with E-quarter that will not become effective until such time that a final subdivision map is recorded. A zone change was processed on this site on January 24, 2006 by Zone Change Case 24 MAP number 101-23 that put the E-quarter district in place pending a final recordation of the map. And finally, the land use designation is consistent with the density that was authorized under the Zone Change Case. Surrounding land uses are commensurate with the proposal and include single-family dwellings on lots that range in a quarter acre to half-acre lots. Through the process, staff received eight letters from surrounding property owners. Copies of all correspondence received are attached for your commissioners' reference. There are many of the same concerns that staff addressed within the staff report. I'd like to go over a few of those now. Comments were received stating concern about the current condition of Jenkins Road and flooding issues on the roadway. A condition of approval has been included that requires widening and restriping of Jenkins Road, which includes type A improvements, which is curb, gutter, and sidewalk, and a trip generation study to evaluate further needs. In regard to drainage, a preliminary drainage plan has been tentatively approved by the Public Works Department. In addition, a condition of approval has been included requiring the applicant address any drainage and potential flooding issues. I would also like to note that there is a representative from Public Works that is present at the hearing tonight who can answer any specific questions regarding the recommended road improvements. One letter mentioned the lack or loss of multi-use trails for horseback riding along Jenkins Road. Staff evaluated this during the review process, and the project site is not adjacent to any designated or located on any formerly established multi-use trails alongside Jenkins Road. Therefore, it was not included in the design. Concerns regarding small lot size was also submitted. The applicant staff would like to note that the applicant is not requesting to exceed the density that was approved under Zone Change 34 MAP 101-23 on this site that was previously authorized from A to E-quarter, which is also consistent with the Rosedale specific plan designation of SR that allows for four lots per acre. Parcels adjacent to the site are also zoned E-quarter, which solidifies the compatibility with the area. Comments were also submitted regarding sewer and water. Because the closest live sewer line is approximately two miles from the project site, the applicant is not required to connect at this time. However, they are required to install dry sewer infrastructure that would allow for future connection and will serve the sewage for the area at a later date. With regard to water supply, the applicant has submitted a conditional will serve letter issued by the Vaughan Water Company, and this will be confirmed during the final recordation of the map should the proposal be approved. There were also concerns regarding property value decrease due to the density that is proposed. Again, staff would like to reiterate that the applicant is complying with the designated land use of SR and with the zone that is E-quarter. In addition, no evidence has been presented for evaluation, and decreased property values based on density is speculative. And finally, one of the concerns that we received were regarding air pollution and noise increase. The project proponent will be required to address and comply with all of the air district's requirements. All noise issues have been addressed under the requirements established under Title VIII of the Ordinance Code, limiting the times of construction. In addition, these concerns were addressed and evaluated through the establishment of the previously mentioned Zone Change Case that was processed and authorized in 2006. During the processing of this project, a subdivision review committee meeting was held on March 24, 2021, where conditions were discussed and clarified with the applicant. During that meeting, the applicant indicated they understood all the recommended conditions that would be considered by your commission. Staff has evaluated the project and the applicant's justification for the zone modification and the deviation of the land division ordinance. In regard to the zone modification, this is consistent with the fence heights within a front yard setback, and it is typical for sumps to include six-foot-high fences due to safety reasons, and mini-zone modifications have been processed throughout the county for this reason. Therefore, staff has found the findings for the zone modification requests to have been met. Staff has also found that through the evaluation of the tract and because of the orientation of the parcel, the deviation to include a lot depth greater than three times the width is justified, and that the tract is in compliance with all findings to be made for approval of this project. Therefore, staff recommends your commission approve the vesting tentative tract map with the associated limited design variation to allow a lot depth greater than three times the width, approve zone modification to allow a six-foot-high fence within the front yard setback of the sump lot where a four-foot-high fence is required, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available for any questions at this time. Thank you.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, please go.
Staff, I've noticed there's no secondary access. There's only one ingress and egress for fire department purposes, and I believe that's a requirement.
That was evaluated by fire, and I believe because of the number of lots, it has not been required by fire at this time.
So is there anybody available from the fire department to explain why? Because you've got 25 houses. If one or two of them catch on fire, you've got no way getting out of there. You could block the road, and you'd be stuck.
We had not received any... Do we have anybody from fire on? We only have Public Works on the line this evening to discuss that safety issue. During our subdivision review committee meeting, fire was present, and they had no comments. I can't... Unfortunately, I can't suppose what they would say at this time.
Okay. Well, I'm not prepared to approve it without a secondary access.
I understand.
Madam Clerk, do we have the applicant on the line? Yes, we do. We have Sean Reed from McIntosh &amp; Associates. Sean, if you could please dial *6 on your phone to unmute your line.
Hi, I'm available here. This is Sean with McIntosh.
Hi, Sean. Do you have any comments that you would like to make on behalf of the project?
With respect to the fire department comments, I was looking through the package here to see if there was anything from the fire department, but typically, a secondary access is required when there's a certain number of lots. There are several subdivisions within the county that are similar to this, where there's one access and not a lot of lots, so I would believe that this would be consistent with county requirements.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments?
Madam Chair, I know there was several of these in place way back when, but we put the ordinance in place to protect the safety and health and welfare of the people that live in that subdivision, and I'm not sure when that was put in place. It wasn't recently, but it's been there for a while, and I've been on this commission 16 years. And every time it's come up, and it's not there, I've approached it and discussed it, and it was required. So I'm wanting to see proof, facts, that a secondary access is not required in writing from the fire department.
Of course. Sean, do you have any other comments outside of this topic? Sean, do you have any other comments outside of this topic? Okay, thank you. Do we have any?
No, I do not. However, could rather than postpone the approval of it, could it be conditionally approved?
Ms. Simon is shaking her head, no.
I'm sorry, that is not possible. Commissioner Sprague through the chair, if I may. There is a condition that we did receive from the fire department which lists a number of requirements that must be met. That does indicate that they have looked at the proposal, and they do understand that there is only one entrance and one egress, one egress. They do state that they want hydrant spacing within the residential tract. This is condition number 23. Hydrant spacing within the residential tract shall be a maximum of 660 feet, a minimum flow of 500 GPM at 20 PSI for one hour. They have fire hydrant requirements, water system loop, and several other requirements that have been provided. Therefore, staff, and it is part of the requirement regarding the number of lots where they do require a secondary access. I was able to confirm that. However, I'm not able to confirm that from the fire department themselves.
So are you saying the fire department says it's not necessary, and that's good enough for staff? But what about the people living in those lots?
I understand your concern. I would say that as far as our purview of review, and it's a number of lots that triggers when a secondary access is required. If the fire department does look at the request and does not find it a need, staff generally doesn't press too much farther than that.
Okay, well, I mean, people do make reviews and miss stuff also.
That's absolutely true.
Again, my point here is health, safety, and welfare to people that live there.
Absolutely. And you do have an option of requesting a continuance for staff to look into this, if you'd like, and suggest that to your fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Sprague and Commissioner Judge, before we continue, I want to make sure we hear from all the public speakers unless you...
That was my comment. We should allow us to finish public comment, then we could discuss amongst ourselves after completion of public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Judge.
Chair, Ms. Skidmore, there have been no requests from the public to speak on this item.
Great. Okay, now we'll bring it back to the commission.
Would you like to close public comment prior to?
Yes, I'd like to close public comment with no callers on the line. So now we can bring it back to the commission for any additional questions, comments, or motions.
Yes, so I'd like to make a comment to staff a few questions, if you don't mind me asking. And going back to understanding, help me understand this a little bit, if you don't mind, Ms. Simon here, is the request of the commission tonight is a modification of depth of the actual lot and the fencing, correct? We are, in a sense, not reviewing the overall site map, the design. This has gone through and been approved by the board supervisors originally, correct? The zone modification allowing for the size of acreage of lots for quarter acre lots?
So the zone change has gone to the board of supervisors. However, the design of the tract is before your commission, and the zone modification to allow the six-foot fence within the sump lot within the front yard setback where a four-foot fence is required.
I just wanted to get a clarification on that. So it is, we are looking at the depth and the zone of that?
You are. You are looking at the lot depth. That's the deviation to the land division ordinance, and then you are also looking at the zone modification and the tract.
Okay. I'll hold my other comments for other commissioners before I have a few more questions. I'll turn them to the commissioners first.
Are there other commissioners that would like to speak?
So staff, are you saying that it may not be required in the subdivision because there was something existing prior to it, and it's not on our plate tonight?
No. There was a Zone Change Case that was previously approved to put the E Quarter Zone in place for the tract map. Tonight, that was approved in 2006. What you are considering this evening is the design of the tract, the zone modification to allow the fence within the front yard setback, and within the design of the tract, there is a deviation to allow a lot three times in depth than the width of the lot. Those are the things that you are looking at this evening.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Judge?
Yes, so I'd like to comment on, and I appreciate Commissioner Sprague's comments on the fire and safety, and of course, safety is always priority, I think, in all of our eyes, coming through a process and through a development on a project. I would just speak from my personal deal with the fire department. I know fire, health, and safety is one of their priority, top concerns as well, when they're developing and looking at these projects, and ingress and egress is probably one of the top parts they look at to make sure they get the, for a vehicle to come in, to have a turn ratio, to be able to access to water, and be able to facilitate enough fire coverage for the lots that are allocated. And I would turn to staff. Simon, do you mind reading one more time the requirement that they put on for the fire hydrants on this tract design?
Yes, that is condition number three. It's on page number four of your draft resolution for the tract map. And that says, "Developers shall comply with the requirements of the Kern County Fire Department regarding fire hydrants, fire flows, and hydrant maintenance. Hydrant spacing within residential tracks shall be a maximum of 600 feet. B, the minimum required flow is 500 GPM at 20 PSI residual for one hour. C, fire hydrants shall be AWWA-approved. D, the water system shall be looped. E, reflective markers shall be installed to identify hydrant locations per the Kern County Development Standards. F, should the tract be phased, each phase shall be provided with the required fire protection. And G, fire hydrants are to be maintained by the approved entity."
Okay. The other question I have looking at this as well, too, is curling this site, only access it has is off of Jenkins. There is no other parallel street that touches or comes in contact with this site due to existing homes and structures around this facility. Am I correct in understanding that?
You are correct.
So the ability to give access to the site can and only come off Jenkins at this point without having to try getting access off Ascot or one of the other cul-de-sacs without having to require ownership or take ownership of existing residential lot that's there. So my understanding would be, and the public works would probably help comment on this if we have them on the line, but is that a facility like this, having more than one access within that small frontage of Jenkins, I think wouldn't meet our requirements to allow multiple access points into residential community on a small frontage. Can I get that clarification from Public Works, if they're on the line?
Paul Candelaria is on the line. Paul, if you could dial *6 on your phone to unmute your line, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. As far as Commissioner Judge's question, I'm not too clear on that part, to be honest with you. It was from my understanding, though, that the single access would be one of the things that would be granted because the houses are also sprinkled.
Which is true, okay. So, but you're unaware of the question I had, but my point I was trying to make is, I think that such a small frontage on Jenkins, trying to have a multiple access within so close to each other would really be feasible on design like this. And I think that's what I was just trying to allude to, that on previous designs that I've seen that we've approved through here is there's a certain amount of footage required between access in and out on the street as far as distances between access points. But if you don't have that clarification, I just was wondering if you had that. It seems like you do not, so thank you.
Yeah, I now understand. Yeah, you're right. To have two accesses, and they'd be so close together that I don't think it would meet a requirement that we could have a certain amount of entrances within a certain distance.
Thank you, I agree. That's what I was trying to allude to. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I have a question of the applicant. On K Way, Marsha K. Way, what's the width of the ingress egress into that cul-de-sac area?
For the applicant, please press *6 to unmute yourself.
It's so small on my plat map, I can't read it.
Yes, so the access point on Marsha K. Way would be, the right-of-way width is 60 feet. That's the county standard.
Coming off of Jenkins Road into the subdivision, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Well, I don't know. The fire department is good with it, and it's going to be required to have sprinklers and the conditions for fire hydrants. I would, I'm reluctant to vote for it on a positive basis, but if the fire department's happy with it, and staff's happy with it, and the rest of the commissioners would be, then I guess we just go with it. It's in writing. But at some time in the future, I would like to see factually where it says that it's not going to be required on smaller subdivisions because of the number of lots or whatever, and if that can be provided to this commission at a later date so that we can actually factually see in writing what it says about secondary access in small subdivisions.
Commissioner Sprague through the chair. Staff will be contacting fire department to confirm what the threshold is for requiring a secondary access, and we will provide that for your commission at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Judge, do you have anything else?
No, if there's no other commissioner comments, I'm opposed to make a motion.
Commissioner McGiffney, since you're on the line, do you have any comments or questions?
Just, I think we do need to know what the ordinance is for the access ingress egress, and if we don't have that, I'm kind of with Commissioner Sprague. I wouldn't know if we want to vote for this yet if we don't know the answer to that.
Thank you.
What if we, the rest of the commissioners, what if we continued this until they provide factual information to this dais that it would not be, a secondary access would not be required and just print so we know for sure?
Commissioner Sprague, is that your motion?
That's my motion, but I think you've got a motion.
I think, yeah, we were just, I think it's still a discussion. Commissioner, I appreciate your comment, and again, my question to you would be on that idea of it is, is the county has requirement of ingress egress as far as sizing of road requirements, which are fire. So you've got two 30-foot road width here, and plus, you've got curb or sidewalk, so you have full width of in and out, which is required, and normally, on a fire vehicle, they need... I cannot speak for the fire department. I am just speaking from what I believe from my previous knowledge of doing development is they normally need a minimum of a 20-foot on a roadway. So with the 60-foot, I think that gives more than the clearance that is normally required from fire department, and I think they're maximizing what's allowed of a street access into this facility. And so my thought on continuance, my thought would be is, I don't think we'd get more of modification to this access into the site. And secondly, I think, again, dealing with fire, every home is sprinkled, and I think the fire department does quite a great job to make sure when these plot maps come through that they try maximizing, the first course I've always noticed is making sure they're good with in and out of a site and a facility. I would just hate to continue as a project and kind of end up in the same situation where we are today, because I don't think they would require additional access, because the last part would be with Jenkins, you would not be able to get two accesses into Jenkins with the width being so close to each other. And so those are my thoughts on it. You know, I'll open up to anybody else on that portion.
Commissioner Sprague, if I may, through the chair. What I'd like to kind of maybe clarify what Commissioner Judge is trying to say is that the design of the law, of, excuse me, of the tract as it is, if you had a secondary access, there is a requirement for distance between egress and ingress and egress depending on the speed of the road. Jenkins is 55 miles per hour, which would mean that the additional, the secondary access would have to be spaced in such a way that it would either remove lots from that tract or it may not be feasible at all safely for vehicles to leave and come from the site if there was a secondary access. In addition, there are radiuses for the fire trucks, which also need to be met, which would change the corner radius for design, which may also turn into, and may turn into a safety issue. And I think that is what, if I could say, Commissioner Judge is trying to clarify.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. And that's what I was touching bases by doing. I think we could open up a can of worms on other issues as well, when it comes to access and easements and traffic flow for fire. So I was looking at this, I felt this met the requirements that would work for this design, and it meets very similarity if you look at, you know, the surrounding territory out there as well, too. You know, if you look at the previous maps, the homes across the street also have only one in and out off the cul-de-sacs as well, so it's a somewhat similar design concept of all the lots that are on Ascot, Pillman Co. It's a single cul-de-sac in and out, so it really matches existing design features that are in that area and territory. So I think my thought would be, I don't feel we, as a commission, could be able to make much of an improvement to the design based on what's around the site, and my motion was to be to put this on for a vote to approve as staff recommendation, but again, I'll open up to my other commissioners.
Commissioner Sprague, would you like to amend your motion or retract your motion?
I'll retract the motion at this point and go with Commissioner Judge.
Commissioner Judge, would you like to make your motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve this as written record by staff and allow the variance of the depth of the lots along with the six-foot fence.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion. In the spirit of what Commissioner Sprague was saying, it would be nice in the future, staff, you do a fantastic job. Would be nice in the future, maybe, if we could have a positive affirmation from the department that this kind of variance is acceptable to them. That I do second.
We have a first and a second, so we will do a roll call vote.
Mr. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Judge?
Yes.
Ms. McGiffney?
No.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Reluctantly, yes.
Four ayes, one no.
Thank you. We are now to the end of our agenda.
Actually, we do have an appeal. Yes, sorry. Sorry, give me a quick second. I just need to grab an agenda real quick. This is for tract map specifically. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of the date of the decision of the planning commission. Any such appeal must be accompanied by an appeal fee of $540. If no appeal is received, the action of the planning commission is final. There is no right of appeal for projects for which the planning commission's action is advisory to the action. is advisory to the action required to the Kern County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. We are on to item H. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for May thirteenth, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Take it.
All ayes?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Have a good evening.[1674.91]